Thank you. Welcome to order. Sharon, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wengert.
Hi, I'm here, excuse me.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin. Mayor Alfs.
Here. Okay, we will start with oral communications. If anyone wishes to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda, you may do so now. We'll look for Rita, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Thank you. My question, I had sent it to Jeremy into the town council earlier before five, but I had a meeting with the South San Mateo County Legal Women Voters yesterday, and we had a discussion about recusals on town committees and councils. And they stated that each town is different based on the bylaws, but that I should ask the town, what are the stipulations for the Portola Valley Town Committees members to recuse themselves on different projects? And the second part is concerning the Stanford Wedge project in Portola Valley, how many members of the Planning Committee, ASCC, and Town Council have to recuse themselves from the project and why? Is there a place in the town's bylaws that state what happens when a committee or Town Council no longer has a quorum to vote on a project due to recusals? And Jeremy had answered part of it, but the answer is just so wild. So I'd like to hear your answers on it.
Well, if I may, Mayor Alfs, it may be best to have the county attorney answer that question around recusals.
Sure, thank you. Kara Silver, I'm the county attorney for Portola Valley. So the state law governs recusals and disqualifications for the most part. And under state law, generally, if you have a financial interest in a particular decision, then you need to disqualify yourself. And financial interests typically involve income that's received. So if you have a job or you're employed by an applicant for a project, then you need to recuse yourself. Also, real property interests, if you own property within a certain number of feet of a project, you need to recuse yourself. And if you own stock in a company that is going to be applying for a development permit, that's a standard grounds for recusing yourself. So basically, if you have a financial interest that could be impacted by the decision, state law would require that you recuse yourself. In connection with the Stanford project, we do have a few committee members and a council member who have some financial interests under the Political Reform Act or state law that governs these issues. And so as the project moves through the process, those committee members will be accusing themselves. And with respect to the particular interests at the council level, Mayor Alfs has a conflict in that he did some work a while ago for Stanford, and so he has a source of income from Stanford. So he has announced that he will be recusing himself. We have two planning commissioners who have announced that they will be recusing themselves on the Stanford project. One of the planning commissioners is currently doing some property-related work for Stanford University. And the other council or the other planning commissioner owns some property close to the Stanford Wedge property. So she will be recusing herself. As to the ASCC, one of the commissioners also owns property within close proximity to the wedge property, and so he will be recusing himself. And then finally, you had asked about what happens if you, if there are members on the committee that are recusing themselves and so that we don't have a quorum and what happens in that situation? It's a very good question. The Political Reform Act has a provision for that. And what happens is that all of the conflicted members' names are actually put into a hat. And the committee will draw a name of the conflicted members. And that committee member who is selected will actually be able to participate in the decision, even though they have a conflict of interest. And that is referred to as the rule of necessity. So that any project applicant can be guaranteed that they will have a quorum of members of the body participating in the decision. So I think, I think that answers your questions. And we'll be talking more about these issues as we move forward on the Stanford project, and you'll see some of these rules come into play.
And Kara, if I think, I'm not aware through the chair, committee members are not in, they're in an advisory role, so they don't require recusal. Is that correct?
No, they still, they still do because they're advising the council. The Political Reform Act applies to all of the town committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answer.
Sure.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull from consent? I believe number three was going to be pulled. Is that correct?
Jeff.
Yeah.
Jeff, I'd like to pull item three and four.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Before we do that, Kristi, did you want to, did you have a public comment?
Kristi, you may need to unmute yourself if you're in.
Oh, I sent something to Jeremy earlier. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to talk.
Yeah. Kristi, your comment is a more general comment and not aimed specifically at an item on the agenda. So tonight, right now is fine.
Okay, thank you. So I just during the pandemic am concerned about how to keep the residents involved in the Stanford Wedge project. And the, the comment of the project page that you put together has dates and what's been done on those for the EIR. And I thank you for doing that. I'd like to see it for lots of different projects that are this large. So because there's a large amount of interest in the Stanford Wedge project, 300 signatures, easier access for the community would serve all of us better. So such as attaching all the reports rather than us requesting through letters to get the reports. It's just a suggestion of so we can double click and get everything we need without letters. It just might be easier access. And then I know you've done some Zooms with Stanford as well. And how can we also as residents be involved with those Zooms? Since this is an easy, you know, during pandemic, we feel a little bit behind the curtain. And we want to participate as much as we can.
Okay.
And, you know, if you had site things and, and we might be interested in going, could we be six feet apart? I guess that's my other question.
Jeremy, did you want to respond to that at all?
To the best of my ability, I will. So the current town website for Stanford, I believe, has all information up. We continue to update it as we receive things. It is a bit of work in progress in that this is not a normal process by any town, particularly pre-application materials. Application materials are, some communities do that, but this is Brandy for us. So I appreciate everybody's patience as we've worked through that. Secondly, I'm not, Kristi, I'm not sure which, what Zoom meetings with Stanford you're referring to.
Any Zoom meetings.
There have been public meetings with Stanford University. So there's no, there's nothing to present there. And then I think your third comment was just to reopen some meetings with distancing. And actually, if you want to stick with our agenda later, there's going to be a conversation item eight on reactivation plan for town hall and town facilities. So hopefully you've got some information there that can be useful for you. Thank you.
I think that we as residents go to the town versus a Stanford site. So, you know, anything you can get on the town that makes it easy access for us to read things, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, then we had, I believe we were pulling items three and four from the consent agenda. I will take a motion to approve items one and two. So moved. Moved by Craig, seconded by John. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wengert.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda passes. Item three.
Through the chair, I know, Anne, that you had some interest in this item. Did you want us to make a brief presentation now or did you want to ask questions first?
If you were planning to do a presentation, why don't you go ahead and then other, and then I'll come in behind. But otherwise, I'm happy to sort of.
Given that it was on consent, we hadn't planned, so.
Okay. So why don't I jump in? Because here's really, it's, it's sort of a stepping back for a second to understand what we'll be doing next week. For instance, I know that we're coming out of this period, and that's, I think, the number one question I had, just to make sure that as we're looking at a longer term contract, that we are recognizing that we're moving out of this special COVID period. Or if we're not, what the transition looks like again. So that was really the clarification I was looking for. And I have some specific comments about the contract when we get to that. But I think the first question is the most relevant to this group, to everybody on this call.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to describe that now. And upon second thoughts, I would have included it in here. I was going to do it as part of my COVID update in a moment. So we've been speaking with Niall and his team about what our farmers market will look like in the coming weeks. We have agreed over the last week or so to move to a model that allows people to visit the market under some very strict social distancing. And if you give me just a moment, I can actually pull up some slides that I believe I downloaded for this. I'm sorry, just give me one second.
Sure. I'll just ask you, Brandy, because I've got you, is that effective next week? So after tomorrow, so it would be a week in the beginning of June. So it'd be our first farmers market in June.
Yes. And what Jeremy is going to show is a couple of options that we, we've been talking through with Niall and that he was going to present to you in his update. And so there's kind of an either or. I mean, there's a hybrid option or just a pedestrian market option. And yes, that would start next week. And so one of the things that we're looking at is that to continue the safe EV farmers market, that would require us expending the $1,500 a week. And whereas the pedestrian market would not. And so that was something Jeremy was going to talk with you all about. And one of the things that we've worked with Niall is to keep in place is the ability for residents to donate a bag to the Portola Valley School District families in need. So we'll maintain that secure food supply that we, you know, has been provided to about 50 families throughout the duration of the shelter in place. And so whether, whether we, whether you all decide to go with the pedestrian only or the hybrid option, we will work with him to still allow those donations and perhaps expand the ability to purchase donation bags at the pedestrian market as well as online. Turning it over to you now, Jeremy.
Thank you, Brandy. Through the chair. So hopefully you can see a visual of the part of town center on your screens. It shows two aspects of the modified market. One is our, what we call our normal market expanded a bit to the west, northwest to allow social distancing. And I'll come to that in a moment. The second part, and we're still in discussions with, with the, with Niall about this, is whether or not to continue the safe portion of the market. And, you know, right now, our sense is that that's not necessary. And that we would like to transition fully to this social distance market. If, and as we've done in the past with any significant expenditures in the town, once, once we have a recommendation, we take that to the COVID Finance Subcommittee of Anne and Craig. So this is what it would look like. So here's some description of what this would look like. The date is off by a week. So we would be separating booths with a few entrances with social distance requirements. You can see here, I won't read this all. We think this works on our campus, given the size, and we can spread things out. We like this option because it provides some continued return to normal, normalcy while still practicing what's important in physical distancing. So the question back to Niall, and this, this was going on this afternoon, if we were going to, if he was very interested in continuing the safe market, because there are a significant number of people, we believe, would continue to utilize that market, then we would use this portion of the parking lot for that pickup option. And Brandy, Brandy and Carrie and I were talking earlier, and we think that with the opening of the market, it may, that may not be necessary to have the safe market. People can have their friends go down and pick up additional goods instead of going through the safe process. We do want to keep in place the donation bag program. We think that that's really important. So that's where we are right now. So if we don't continue safely, go back to a model where, other than the town covering the cost of some washing stations, which are minimal to no cost, or a couple hundred dollars. And as I said, we've gone back to Niall and, or we will be going back to Niall and saying that, you know, we don't think we need this safe portion of the program. Now that answers your question, yeah.
Yeah, I think it does. And I mean, to be very clear, I think I am fully supportive of all that we've been doing during COVID. And I think it's been terrific. And particularly the donation bags and that portion of it. You know, my sense was that was going to continue. And that was why I was a little bit surprised when I saw this contract coming up, because it was a, what I'll think of as a pre-COVID normal contract, both in terms of its term, because it was three years. And I went, three years? Oh, my goodness, we're just looking, trying to get through three months. And, and it didn't really, it struck me that it was a bit premature because we're still in this COVID period. And, and again, I understand it has that monthly cancellation provision, so we're not locked in irrevocably to anything that we would do. And it's certainly not meant to discourage Niall and his team. But it, I think that from my perspective, I look at it and say, I think we should not have a contract today that looks like our contract from the past. And certainly not for three years in my judgment, just because of the fact that that's a long contract and a lot of things could happen. And it may well be that, I think we're very happy with Niall. I don't think it signals anything other than that. So perhaps it's, I would even think we could go with one year. But again, it would be one year that wouldn't start until we've locked into what I'll call the new normal. Since we're not locked in, but at least we've entered the next phase where we think we'll be operating a safe market. You know, a safe active market that may be a combination still. So perhaps we can execute that today for a year, but I think I'm very uncomfortable looking at anything beyond, beyond a relatively short time period, because none of us really fully understands what the new normal will look like.
Thank you. Craig, you got a comment?
Craig, you're still muted. Craig?
Haven't done that in weeks. I have a question for staff and then a comment. The question is for the, for this modified pedestrian farmers market. Niall, the town is putting up these hand washing stations, I understand, or that's the plan or would if we, if that's the way we decide to go. Would the farmers market that is Niall and all the merchants, that there are a lot of other requirements that the county has regarding posting of practices and training workers and all that kind of stuff. So they would be fully taking that on and they have a, a training program and they'll be doing the gloves and wiping things down and all the stuff that they'd need to be doing for that.
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. And are we reviewing that or is, is Niall taking it on? And, I mean, he's ultimately, he's responsible to the county, I suppose. But I don't know if we were reviewing that.
We will take a look at it. I mean, we've been taking this very seriously. So he, and it's been a very collaborative relationship. We've been able to share ideas and likewise. So not only does he have no issue with that, I'm sure he'd be eager to hear from us if we have additional thinking.
Yeah. And then my, my comment, I guess, maybe it's a comment and or a question, probably mostly directed towards Anne's comments. I was, were there some particular, other than the term, Anne, were there other parts of the contract or any, anything that we're agreeing to that was particularly problematic? I, because I, I get your point that we don't know how the farmers market may look. But the, this, this agreement is fairly generic. And then it doesn't say, you know, the market will look like this or other than the number of merchants and a couple of other things. But I would, I would guess that kind of whatever form the farmers market would take, it would fit into this. But unless there's something that you saw that you were particularly concerned about, that's, that's what I was wondering is, are there particular areas that you're concerned about beyond the one-year term? Or is it just generally longer term contracts are not where you want to go right now?
Through the chair?
Anne, yes.
I think it's a combination, Craig. The one thing that I did notice that was in the contract that I didn't see, or that I didn't notice in the contract. And I, because with all that's happened with COVID and obviously the difficulty for everybody involved. Because Niall is not the farmers themselves, but he's operating a business that's putting this together. They're really responding to his business in a sense. And that's, it works, it's worked very well in the past. But it's, in my mind, there's some question about how well that will work going forward. And there was actually, while there's a number, a maximum number of participants that's allowed, what I didn't see was a, was a, was the counter provision of a minimum number.
If they have fewer than 10, then it's all caught off or something.
Exactly. So that, again, because certainly none of us would want to have the situation where it began to feel really, really bad because it's been a wonderful asset. And again, none of my comments relate to whether, what I hope and really would encourage Niall and his team. But because we're really in the end dealing, we, the town are dealing with one vendor, and that's Niall. I'm very reluctant to look too far forward right now. We can change our mind. You know, in six months, we could come back and say, this is great. We, you know, we're through COVID. We've managed it. You've managed it. And we can extend it if that helps. I'm not sure why we even started with three. And maybe that's a question for staff more than anything. Had Niall asked, had Niall asked for that?
I think that's what the last one was.
Yeah.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Through the chair. And I'm sorry, I keep turning this way because I have a fan on when there's, when it's muted. And when I turn the mute off, I turn the fan off. Sorry, sorry. The, it was something that we thought made some sense. We've been moving to standard three-year contracts across the board. And we have been delighted in what Niall has provided of the last year and his ideas and his response to COVID. So we saw this as an opportunity to potentially lock up Niall over a period of time with a, with a good contract and keep him, keep him with us. So that was the thinking at our end. I don't know, Brandy, you have anything you want to add to that? But that's basically where we landed.
Yeah. And a year goes by very fast, but I, I hear your concerns, Anne.
Okay. If I might, through the chair, I think that answers my question nicely. And I would agree then with the one-year term instead of three. But otherwise, going with this contract makes sense, I think.
The one thing I would say, just in response to that, is that, I mean, there, there is a one-month term. And we can terminate any time with one month notice. So it's a one, it's a three-year contract, but it's not particularly onerous to get out of it if situation, if the circumstances were to change down the road for any reason, whether it was COVID, you know, resurgence of COVID or a performance problem. And it's just, you know, three years makes, makes things easier, I think, for staff and administering. That would be my, my two cents on that. John, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to pitch in, agree with Anne on the shortening the term, just because of the general unknown, unsettled nature of everything. I did also want to comment on the potential of running the safe market at the same time as the normal market, the new normal market. And I'm sure you've considered it, but it looks to me like there might be some traffic issues and pedestrian car issues if we do that, which I don't know how, I mean, people are going to want to park right there. So, you know.
But through the, your question. Oh, sorry. Well, if this is helpful, we, we have talked about it. It ultimately seemed like the best solution out of a series of not great solutions. So we thought that because we had an inability for some people to go down and come back, turn around, that there was some smooth vehicular traffic there. A little concerned about what, what happens on Portola Road for sure. But as I said, I think this was the best option out of a series of not great options.
And on top of that, I think I just pitch in, I think the idea of going to a, a social distancing market at this point makes sense in light of everything else that's changing. And I think it can be set up so it would work fine.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one public comment. David, go ahead.
Hold on, David, I'm coming. There you go.
I, great. It all sounds good. My only thought is that after we start to come out of this, our local dining facilities, I guess we don't have too many, like probably six or less, are going to be in a really hard place for a variety of reasons. So in terms of the town energy and resources, if we have them to spare, instead of throwing them all behind the farmers market, there might be some ways to be creative and help them get back on their feet after what's been a very difficult time.
Okay, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus for going ahead with the extension, but going ahead for one year instead of three? Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect? Oh, Jeremy, yeah.
All right. Just through the chair. Anne, did you have any, you mentioned earlier, you may have some specific questions in the contract. Just want to make sure that.
Just, just the one about the minimum number of tenants, vendors. Again, I think it generally isn't needed, but sometimes if companies or firms get into trouble, meaning if Niall runs into trouble, not the vendors per se, he may hang on longer. Now, we do have that one-month provision, so I'm less concerned about that. So I think, I think it's fine to leave it out, just because we have that very short trigger we can pull if there's a problem. So, so no, I don't have any more specifics. Thanks.
I would move approval of the contract, then changing the term to one year and leaving the rest of it as is.
Second?
Okay, moved by Craig, seconded by Anne. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wengert.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Alfs.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item four, the animal, animal control contract. Did somebody have a comment on this one in council? Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Starting off with a. Yes, sorry. Starting off with a bang tonight, but anyway, mine's more of a question because the one thing that I, and you know, what an amazing time for all this to be happening too. But Jeremy, I know that there is still a payment that we're going to be owed for the remainder, our portion of the capital improvements related to the new facility. And I just wondered if we had an idea of what the magnitude of that might be. I mean, I've seen what we've paid to date, but if we've been given any information since that work, I think, has been completed, right? The facility is open and, open and finished.
Correct. Through the chair, in 2021, it'll be five thousand, just over $5,000, $5,014. So the actual total share that we're going to be paying into animal control is actually a little bit less overall than what we pay this year. And part of that appears to be because there were more, more opportunities for licensing animals in town, which is amazing, which is great. We've always been
More pets.
More pets. So if you have a pet and you have not licensed your pet, please license your pet.
He's licensed.
I licensed three last year, so.
There we go.
Keep sending me bills for the same pet over and over every year.
Well, with that, I will be, move approval of item four on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by John. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
We can't hear you, Sharon, or at least I can't. You don't seem to be muted, but I can't hear you.
Still muted.
Oh.
Sharon, I can do the roll call right now while you do some technical troubleshooting. So roll call is Councilmember Winger.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes?
Hi.
And Mayor Alf.
Hi.
Okay, item four passes. Thank you, Jeremy. For item five, we're hearing a report from the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Chris Rains will be doing that. Chris, you can unmute yourself and I'll let you record in on the screen sharing.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Jeremy, I think you suggested it's easiest to run off your computer. Is that correct? Jeremy?
Yeah, let me try this again. Do you see the presentation?
Do not.
You do not? Okay, try this one more time.
I can just hold it up. I'm also happy to share from my screen if you're having a
I've got it here.
Okay.
I think you should do shadow puppets.
Wait till you see slide four.
Okay.
All yours, Chris.
Excellent. All right. Well, we know, we know the topic. It's the Emergency Preparedness Annual Update and thank you very much. Let's go to slide two for the agenda. So I'm, I'm going to walk through just a brief introduction, talk about what we do, why we do it. I'll give an overview that kind of sets the context and then by category, go through what we've done, what we're still working on and some of the, some of the things we've run into along the way. And I promise not to take too much time doing all that. So next slide, please. What drives us? There's really four pillars and we're organized around this and we think about things around this. And they're not, they're not in order of importance, but these four pillars drive the Emergency Preparedness Committee outreach, educating the community, in other words, talking to everybody. Educating the community on being prepared is probably the single most important thing we can do to be ready for any kind of emergency. We're fortunate to once again have a medical component of the Emergency Preparedness Committee and thinking about what our medical response would be and how it would be integrated into a larger. We can't do a lot as a small town, but how does it get integrated into the larger county, state, Woodside Fire Protection District Organization? Point number three, integrating with this new organization, WPV CERT. Right? It stands for Woodside Portola Valley CERT. It is the new organization that replaces SERP. Being coordinated with them, being coordinated with the Woodside Fire Protection District, being coordinated with the Citizens Emergency Response Team and with our friends and neighbors in Woodside is really at the core. All, we're so dependent on one another and intertwined that getting that integration right is a big deal. And then finally, communications, communications both to the local county and state authorities, asking for help, getting advice, understanding what's going on and then being able to turn around and relay the relevant information to the residents of Portola Valley. Really, really, really key. Let's go to the next page if we could. So having said, and I'll pause and then a slide or two to take questions in case something's coming up along the way. But having said that those four pillars are really how we think about the world. It's also how we've organized ourselves and we think it's probably one of those process keys that's really helped us. We think we've been reasonably, reasonably effective. We hope so. We'll get some feedback here later. But the big, the big monthly meeting is for reporting and talking. The, the action in the Emergency Preparedness Committee happens in the subcommittees and we've organized the subcommittees around those four pillars. And I must say, I'm really, really proud to have such high performing numbers and subcommittee chairs. And at the risk of extending this, I really want to thank the members individually, David Howes, Ray Rothrock, Craig Taylor, Jerry Sheffron, Dale Fow, Lori Duvall, Mark Burko and Bud Trapp. And in case I skip this part of the beginning introducing myself, I'm Chris Ronis and I've been chairing the committee for the last year and for this year. Special thanks, of course, to John Richards, our council liaison, who I think has found just the right touch between advising and keeping us between the guardrails. We don't, don't go off doing something that would cause the town attorney to have to intervene or anything like that. So thank you. Thank you very much for, for your help. Let me pause there for a second before I walk through by subcommittee what we've done and what we're, what we're working on. All right, now we'll keep going. Let's, let's jump ahead. So overview. We, we're in an environment, the last few years, where there's a pretty heavy influence from all the California wildfire activity. And, and that means obviously people are very worried about wildfire and there's been a lot of things. We've had the ad hoc wildfire committee. It's driven some of our actions. But it also means that there is a very keen awareness for emergency preparedness. And we've seen that in resident participation, people coming to our meetings, the, the engagement we're getting at the public events we were able to hold pre, pre COVID. And at the same time, there's a whole new energy in the WPV CERT and WPV Ready, the new organizations that replace SERP. And a lot of credit out to that group in Woodside Fire District that's put that together because they've reorganized, they've put a lot of energy in it and, and that's just working together at a time when there's all this interest for us to dovetail together and get a unified ability to respond. So high level over the last year and this year, you know, the ad hoc wildfire committee, we had a liaison there, we've got regular updates and feedback from that led to one of the big deals from the committee, which is a big upgrade in the town AM radio. We'll talk about that a little later. We're really fortunate that we're able to recruit and bring on a, an MD who was willing to head the medical subcommittee. So we have a medical subcommittee. Again, we had one years ago, but you need, you really need someone with some expertise there to do that and delighted to have it. We have a new lead and expanded communications outreach. On the integration with the WPV CERT, we've, we've established the concept of how the two organizations will organize to an emergency and the co-location of what WPV CERT will do as a command post and what the town has invested so much time and energy in. The town EOC, we're finalizing the details, but we understand the concept and continuing that integration. It's a theme you'll hear me talk about again and again is a major goal for 2020. So Jeremy, if we could go ahead, right to the next slide. Okay, so, so for outreach, we welcome the leadership of Lori Duvall as the new head of that subcommittee. Anne Kopsl was the head before that. Lot of energy in this. And Lori outlined here, the February and the January results of monthly tips on resilient Portola Valley and the fact that these, this particular outreach had the highest open rate of any town notice. You know, that's only the tip of the iceberg. That's what January and February were about before we kind of went into hibernation a little bit. But I have seen so much good work between this subcommittee, Lori, Selena at the Woodside Fire Protection District, getting notices out to people. And like I said, I think it's the number one thing we can do. The next thing I talk about are the fact that COVID-19 has stopped a lot of things, right? How do you reach out to people? Obviously you post things on PV Forum, you mail things, but a lot of it is person to person. And we had a lot of hopes for doing things at picnics, neighborhood watch meetings, a table at the farmer's market in April where people come by and you have, you just have the ability to hand things out and get people thinking about preparedness. Again, number one priority. And of course, there's supposed to be a large scale earthquake drill that had to be canceled because of COVID. So the way that we're looking at this for the near term priorities are to continue engage residents the best we can in some Zoom classes together with the WPV Ready group. Now let's jump to the next one. Communications, I'd like to really thank Ray Rothrock for his continued leadership on this subcommittee. And we've really, we've done a lot of work here. And the first one I mentioned is the town AM radio upgrade and relocation. And I'm going to just park that for a moment because I've got another slide on it. But things that, things that this group has gotten done that I'm really, really proud of. Maintaining the amateur radio link to the County of San Mateo Office of Emergency Services. We were, we were literally in the dark for a few years and got this, this radio up and running. It is, it's turned out to require an awful lot of attention and this subcommittee has just had a lot of energy and been able to keep that running so that we have great line of communication. This group hosted a joint amateur radio, emergency communication and a Portola Valley Communications Day. It was live last year. I'll show you a picture. We roll out some emergency equipment that we have. We were going to do it again this year and make it more a broader safety day, but had to cancel it. And we're looking at doing it online, Safety Day and Communications Day. And then upgraded the ways of talking between the town, this new organization, WPV CERT, and the different sections of town, right? I mean, town is not all within shouting distance of the EOC, the town hall, which is where we're headquartered in the event of an emergency. But this committee has worked on ways to keep communications open to those field teams. And in terms of priorities, a lot of equipment, a lot of things have gone into place, make sure they, they stay reviewed, maintained, full of batteries so that we really are ready. I think we're in a good place right now, but we need to sort of institutionalize that process. We need to get a solid plan for the Portola Valley arm of the WPV CERT. Now that we understand the co-location, we need just a good way for those groups to talk. Just, just for example, as I said, CERT is a Citizens Emergency Response Team. It's independent of the town. It can activate on its own. And the way we've arranged it is to have it activate its incident command on the grounds of the town center. And we've looked at a, Jeremy and I scoped out a couple of different places it might be where worst case of all the power goes out, we're going to have runners going back and forth. But that's not the idea. So let's assume that it was in a library conference room or something like that, that this group of emergency responders was headquartered. We're making sure that we have a good, solid way of talking between the EOC, where the town is making the big decisions and communicating and asking for resources from the authorities and the people who are running out to try and help, to do windshield surveys, to maybe move a tree out of the way, et cetera. Let's go to the next page if we could. So the, the AM radio upgrade and relocation, I, I hope, I hope the town is as aware of all the work that went into this. But let me just do a little history. Based on the feedback from last year's ad hoc wildfire committee, there were, a lot of concern was raised about the ability to communicate with town residents, especially if there's a PG&E public service power outage. As it turns out, the cell phone towers have a very, very limited battery. And the idea was, well, what about this emergency AM radio? Is this a good way to get things out to the residents? And we, we did a test and found that about 60% of the town was, was covered. The EPC and the town did a study, how can we do things about that? And what we implemented was a new, a new improved license from the FCC. We were, we got ourselves the ability to increase the power. We got ourselves the ability to use a much more efficient antenna, which again increases the range. We relocated, as convenient as it was to have the antenna right outside town hall, putting it up on top of a hill, which is where it's now located, gives much broader coverage. And, and the estimate is that something like two and a half times the range. And the signal clarity is just incredible. So the, the radio coverage is now almost all of Portola Valley, almost all of Woodside. And you can clearly hear it across, across 280. I know that earlier, when the, when the COVID shutdown started, we even broadcast the, the first few of the town, the town meetings over that. So that's a really great resource. If we jump to the next page. Just want to show you a couple of pictures. That big black thing, the vertical thing is our new high efficiency antenna. And it looks like the picture we chose is one of me standing there. You'll notice I'm wearing a mask as we raised this thing during the, during the COVID pandemic. But we got it, we got it up there. And like I said, it's working fantastic. Over on the right is a picture of that public event we do every year outside of town hall. And you see a trailer with a big antenna. And while there's no denying that we all have a lot of fun doing that, that's one of the things that the EPC loves to do. That trailer is parked at the fire station in town and completely replicates all of the communication things I was just talking about. In the event that we have an emergency and we can't use our town hall EOC, all we need to do is back up anybody's Jeep with a class three hitch and drag that radio to wherever we set up our tent, other location, et cetera. And we can get hold of local authorities, we can get hold of the county, we can get hold of the state, which is a really nice resource to have. I'm particularly proud of that one. Onto next page, please. Medical, like I said, probably the number one feeling of accomplishment here is that we have reformed the medical subcommittee and we really are delighted to have Jerry Sheffron, a retired doctor, as the head of that subcommittee. And he has been very busy. He's, he's established relationships with the San Mateo County Director of Emergency Service. He started working with the San Mateo County Medical Reserve Corps. He's on the, on the theme of integrating with the WPV CERT. He goes to the logistics committee of that on a regular basis and works with the medical subcommittee of that group on a regular basis and has been really instrumental in planning the big disaster exercises, one we did last year and one we had to cancel. And the way Jerry's looking at that subcommittee is anything we can do that gives us stronger ties to the medical services, to the WPV Ready and CERT, the Red Cross. A look at both a strategy and what we do with medical supplies. Most likely, as we're moving along, we're going to do that together again with WPV CERT as opposed to the town having any medical supplies. Continue the participation and promote personal safety. If we can get those messages out, and it's even more true now in COVID times than ever, promoting the right things to do, people want to hear what's the right thing and they, they act on it. It's just been wonderful to see. So promoting through education, training and acquiring what you need personally to be safe during emergency, really, really important. Next slide, please. The last of our subcommittees, remember those four pillars. And this is one, I'm heading this subcommittee, driving for us to have an integrated response. Us, Woodside, the Woodside Fire Protection District and WPV CERT. Us, Woodside, the Woodside Fire Protection District, and WPV CERT. And we've begun that. We talked about the separate incident command posts, but co-located. We talked about how they can be independent, but once the emergency happens and these structures start deploying, we've got a way of integrating it in so that the WPV CERT group becomes part of the operations arm of the town. We're clear on who does the communications to the higher authorities, and that is the town EOC. We, we wanna deploy a liaison over to Woodside, just like Woodside deploys a liaison to our Emergency Preparedness Committee. The tighter that bond can be, the better. We wanna do the same thing to WPV CERT, sort of at the, at the management level. And we feel that one more, one more thing for us to really kind of fine-tune our planning is propose a set of scenarios. Just, let's say, you know, six, a half dozen that we plan for. What do you do if, you know, large wildfire, small wildfire, earthquake, flood, et cetera? So that we just have sort of a framework in the five or six most likely scenarios. So that's a priority still ahead of us. And one more slide will bring us to, bring us to the end. So for the 2019-2020 session, that integration has been sort of an overarching drive. Delighted to have the medical subcommittee and the new chair working that one hard. Really, really proud of the coverage reliability and capable of our communications to the AM radio. And really, really pleased with the consistent messaging through our outreach through multiple channels. And my final note, as I conclude this, is I wanna thank on behalf of the whole committee, not just the individuals I, I mentioned at the beginning, but we feel, we feel an incredible support from the government of the, of the town. And we thank you for that. It makes all the difference. So to the mayor, to the town council, to the town manager, you guys have been consistent behind us. You've been very supportive and it's not a, it's not a win-convenient thing. You've been supporting us for the long term and we really, really thank you for that. Thank you.
Chris, thank you. Great report. And you guys have done, you guys always do an impressive both volume and quantity of work for us, so quality of work for us. So thank you. Are there counsel questions for Chris? Oh, John?
Yeah, I was gonna raise my hand, but my raised hand thing seems to have disappeared. Anyway, I just wanted to add that this, this committee is really impressive. You, if you look over at the attendees here tonight, there's a bunch of folks from this committee sitting in this hot night, participating in the meeting. So it just shows the great dedication we've gotten on that, on this group. And I wanna thank you all, all you guys for, and gals for, for being there. Anyway, that was it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. And thank you, John, for, for all the work you've done as liaison to this group. I know you, I know you've been very involved. We have one comment from the public. Rusty, go ahead.
Rusty, you may need to, sorry.
There, thank you. Well, first of all, I certainly wanna commend Chairman Reins and this entire organization, all the committee members that work on this. You've taken on a huge responsibility. And it's very important to the town and the work you do is much appreciated. In that vein, I wanna take us back to the safety element of the general plan. And I'm sure you've looked at it. It was written in 2010. And in the safety element, the town set out some pretty clear priorities. This was 10 years ago. One of the priorities was to take the Maritz Fire Safety Study.
Rusty, I'm sorry, does this, does this have to do with the work of the EPC?
Yes, exactly. Because the safety element called out what the EPC should be doing. And one of the pieces that it called out was to take the Maritz Fire Safety Study and use it to educate the residents of Portola Valley about the fire risks in town. And that has not happened. Another priority that was called out in the safety element as a high priority was to establish an emergency operations center in the town. And I'm glad to see we're making progress toward. My question is, is it up and operating? And the third priority that was called out in the safety element was to implement evacuation procedures for the town and to rehearse them and practice them, to make sure that they were fully communicated to the residents of the town and rehearsed. And in that regard, I would highly commend to the Emergency Preparedness Committee and all of its members to look at the frontline documentary on the Camp Fire in Paradise that aired in November 2019, to see what happened in a town that was prepared for wildfire, had an emergency operations center, had evacuation plans in place which they had rehearsed and And I think that we are underestimating the risk that we face as a town, both seismically because earthquakes are going to spawn fire, but also more importantly, topographically and from vegetation in this town. And the urgency of dealing with this is much greater than 10 years. We need to get on top of this. And I think if you go back and look at the safety element and read what the safety element said 10 years ago, you'd understand why we need to redouble our efforts with a much greater sense of priority and a much higher commitment of funding from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Chris, thank you again for the reports, and we look forward to seeing and hearing more of you in the coming year.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, is there any, any other counsel questions for the, for Chris? Anne, go ahead.
System's funky tonight. Not a question, but really a thank you to that committee because I think that you have been one of the most successful committees in town and have been operating incredibly effectively for a number of years. And I think have, have moved the ball forward for the town in ways that I know haven't always been easy, but it's been the commitment of you, Chris, and your, and your colleagues. So to all of you, thank you for all of your efforts and keep up the great work.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you again. And we will move on to item six, which is an update on COVID-19. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor House members of the council. I'd like to keep my report brief tonight because I think a lot of what I would normally say is actually in the next item, which is the reactivation of AM. I just wanna add a few, maybe little tidbits or pieces of information that have occurred over the last week or so that I think would be of interest to members of the council and residents who are on the, the call tonight. As people know, particularly those who live near Windy Hill, Windy Hill's been open the last couple of weeks. This last weekend was incredibly busy. It was some of the largest traffic and parking around Windy Hill we've ever seen. We had an unfortunate incident that actually occurred on Willowbrook with some graffiti that called for people to go home. I bring it up because I understand that there was some further inaction today between members of the crew cleaning up the graffiti and someone who drove by telling the crew to clean, to go home. I'm, understand everyone's frustrations right now. I think we all wanna get back to something that looks normal. And I hope that people can continue to be patient as, as we work through these issues. I hope that issues like this, this vandalism do not occur again. If people are frustrated, I hope they call me or the mayor or members of the council and express their concerns in that, in that way. I was sorry that, that occurred. We have opened up all of our parking except for one tiny spot right next to the Sequoias as it relates to Windy Hill. And that did take some pressure off of the situation for the weekend, but we just had a ton of people out. And that's likely to continue. I understand anecdotally that, that Mid-Penn Regional Open Space District Rangers across the district ran out of parking citations. It was so busy. So that tells you how many people were actually out in the various parks. And this was an issue on the beaches as well. The, you know, we're waiting, I think, as, as much as everyone else is, to see when the next phase of orders are revised by the county. Right now, it's an open-ended order. And we are seeing on a regular basis, new allowances and loosening of restrictions. The one that I'm really happy has occurred in the last week is that we're seeing opportunities for those who are graduating from school to celebrate in some fashion. So we're talking to our friends in the school district and Woodside Priory about what those celebrations will look like. So we want everybody to operate under the order as it's currently constructed, but at least we'll be able to have some celebration for those who are reaching this milestone. So that's a, that's a wonderful piece of news. That's really my report. I'm happy to leave most of the details of what I would normally be describing under the reactivation plan, and I'm sure the council has a number of questions and comments.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. Counsel questions for Jeremy? Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, are we talking about the farmers market options under this item or is that gonna be under reopening?
The options for the safe market?
Yeah.
That's actually through the subcommittee. And once Niall and Brandy and the rest of us have talked again tomorrow, we'll come back to you and Anne with that, because that's, that, those decisions have been left from a financial perspective to that committee, subcommittee.
Gotcha, okay. So we're purely looking, just looking at and discussing it from the financial point of view. That, that map you put up earlier, we had some brief discussion under the contract, but I had some comments, I didn't bring up things, it wasn't directly related to the contract.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to do that now. Do you want me, want me to bring that back up? If you had questions about the map?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanted my, I had a comment more than a question, but I didn't know whether that was coming up again later or in what form you were bringing it forward.
I think it's appropriate now, Craig, so here you go.
Um, my, my commenting, comment slash question is really, I, I don't, I'm not sure that this would work all that well, just from the point of view of even when it's just the pedestrian market, the parking and traffic is problematic enough as it is. And if we're trying to have people park to become pedestrians at the market and also trying to do the safe pickup at the same time, I just, I, I think we should, you know, pick one or the other and go with, go with one rather than the hybrid approach. If, if, if the market is ready to switch to a pedestrian form, which it sounds like they, that's all underway in terms of getting the planning for that done.
Yeah, that's the, our, as indicated earlier, the Nile wanted to continue with some part of the safe market. And our suggestion back to them today was that we felt as though just moving forward on a modified social distance market would be appropriate at this point. So this map was prepared prior to that, that discussion. So we, we, we think that a modified market without the safe pickup actually provides more options for people who may not come. We have PV Cares that's doing volunteer work for people where they could pick up supplies from the market. And there's actually more, more options if one goes to the market and picks those up in that way. So I, we'd like to try it from that perspective and see what happens. We do know that there's a sizable number of people who, who may not come to the market, but we think we'd like to try it this way for at least that we can see what happens. If that answers your question, basically, we would not do the hybrid. We, we, we're not, we don't think that that's the approach we wanna move forward.
Thank you. Other counsel questions? Actually, Jeremy, I had one question. You, in the, in the chat box, there was a question about ASCC and you mentioned addressing it in this item, or do you wanna do it now or do you wanna do it as part of the reopening discussion?
I will, I was, would like to do as part of the reopening, although it looks like that they left. I will, I, we've been in contact with the, the Browns by email. Laura's talked to them too. But I committed to Scott and Catherine that I would bring up their question during the council meeting.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have one public comment on this. David, go ahead.
Hold on, David. Okay, you may wanna unmute yourself.
There it goes.
I do. Sure. Quick question. I think we're doing great. It seems great, but the number of new cases in San Mateo County seems stubbornly high over the last few days. Do we have any idea where those are coming from or are we contributing to that? Or it just makes me a tiny bit nervous about why that's happening.
I, I did not look at the cases by jurisdiction this week, so I actually don't off the top of my head. Did anybody check that? I, the short answer is I don't know. I don't know if anyone else knows on the call.
When I looked, we went from under 10 to 10.
It's not Portola Valley, but the county is, is stubbornly high. So I worry about like, why, you know, we're, what are we not doing right as a county, I guess?
There, there are a handful of things that the health officer and the county staff have been telling us on our, we have calls every Wednesday and Friday now with them. There, there are a handful of things that are leading to high numbers of test cases. One is the number of tests performed has gone up dramatically. And just by virtue of testing more people, we're catching more cases. And the other one is that the health officer said that he, he fully expected that as we reopen and people are interacting more, the virus will spread more and there will be more cases. And that reopening is really a trade-off between safety and getting the economy going again. At this point, I think the, the last estimate he had is that about 4% of the population of the county has had the virus, which means 97, 96, 97% are still susceptible to being infected. And so as we reopen, there will be people who get infected. And so the goal is not necessarily to see that number come down, it's to not see it go up. It, it's expected that it will, we will continue to see cases for a long time because we are nowhere close to herd immunity.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. If there are no other questions on Jeremy's COVID report, we can move on to item seven, which is the ordinance, the urgency ordinance for temporary streamlined planning for existing businesses. Jeremy, are you presenting this one?
I'm gonna hand it over through the chair to Laura Russell, our Planning and Building Director.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, members of the council. So what's before you this evening is an urgency ordinance to establish a temporary streamlined planning review process specifically for existing businesses that have been directly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So you'll recall that at the last council meeting on May 13th, Councilmember Wangert reported that she had been working with some local businesses and learned that there may be some issues in some existing CUPs that are presenting challenges for businesses to remain financially viable during this time. So she suggested potentially considering a streamlined review process to support some of those businesses and be able to make some modifications to their CUPs. So council did have consensus around drafting an urgency ordinance for you to consider. So that's what we have for you this evening. The idea of it is to create an ad hoc committee that would review some of these applications. And it would be for certain specific types of projects. So it would only apply to existing businesses, and those are businesses that were operating that had all town approvals and were in good standing when the original shelter-in-place order was issued. And then the idea would be that these would be only temporary approvals, that they would be linked to the, to the pandemic conditions and to the town's state of emergency that the council has enacted. So the proposal is to form the ad hoc planning review committee. And the members of that are proposed to be the Chair of the Planning Commission, the Chair of the ASCC, the Town Manager, and myself, the Planning and Building Director. And we would suggest that one council member act as a liaison to that committee. And the, the ordinance proposes a process where that committee could review certain CUPs, architectural insight development matters and other small things in order to allow these businesses to make the small changes. And those things would normally be reviewed by either the Planning Commission or the ASCC. So the basic So the basic concepts of this process would be that the ad hoc committee would meet on an as needed basis via Zoom. So we would schedule those meetings. They would be public meetings, agenda would be posted and the public would be invited to attend. The exact procedures would be at the discretion of myself, the planning and building director in order to outline the application materials and some of the detailed procedures that we would go through. But we expect to be able to hold those meetings very quickly so that we could take action in, in support of businesses and be able to review their requests. That committee would still have to consider the findings for approval that are in the municipal code. So it would still be based in the same kind of analytical decision making that the planning commission and the ASCC usually consider. And that committee could put conditions of approval the same way ASCC or planning commission could. And then instead of having the normal application fees, we would propose that the applicants just pay a deposit and we would charge the staff time at the currently, at the current hourly rate to process the applications because the normal fee schedule is set up for much lengthier applications and multiple public hearings. It's important to note that as is proposed and before you this evening, there would not be a notice that would be sent to neighbors. So this is different than our normal process. This is a trade off in order to have timely consideration of these applications. And also the difference in terms of procedures is that the appeal period is proposed to be five days instead of the customary 15 days that are out, that's outlined in our code. So we've tried to take the feedback that we received from the council and develop a process that could meet some of the needs of the businesses that we anticipate maybe coming forward. We don't know exactly what all of those needs are, but we do know that other communities are considering different ways of approaching this same issue. So that things like maybe restaurants that want to use some private parking spaces or portions of walkways or outdoor area may be able to receive approval to do so. Businesses unfortunately may need to downsize or combine with another business in order to remain viable. We may want to encourage creative ideas in terms of how people use their outdoor space for curbside pickup or provide some services outdoors. And this would provide an opportunity for the town to consider that in a streamlined fashion, specifically during the state of emergency. So the way that the ordinance itself is drafted, you can see, starting on, the details of it are on red page 106 and go forward from there. An important thing to know is that the proposal would be that the, it would become effective immediately and it would sunset at the same time as the local state of emergency. And then the planning committee would grant the approval for a specific timeframe that was appropriate based on the information that was available at the time. So maybe that would be a date, maybe that would be tied to a local order, maybe that would be tied to some guidance from the state. And so we need to stay a little bit flexible, but certainly the idea would be that those were temporary and connected specifically to the financial impacts and the physical impacts of the COVID pandemic. So that completes my summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Craig's got his hand up. Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Laura, would this, this would be a Brown Act body, right?
Yes.
Does that have any implications for noticing or anything like that? I assume that you, that you drew it. I mean, part of the notification is, is a requirement under the Brown Act. Part of it is we do it to be nice to neighbors, to let them know what's going on near them. And I didn't, just didn't know which of those pieces we had to do and which we didn't. But I assume you've discussed that with the town attorney.
We did think about that. It is a Brown Act body, so we would comply with the Brown Act requirements of posting the agenda and having it be a public meeting according to today's rules over Zoom, right? For these kinds of meetings. And then some of the other noticing requirements are within our code. And so in the ordinance, it specifically says that those sections of the code would not apply and this urgency ordinance would apply instead.
And would we make best efforts to notify people anyway? So even though we're not required to and we don't need the notice periods and so forth, it might be nice to let people know, hey, by the way, there is this Zoom meeting. And if they don't get the email, we tried at least.
We can certainly make best efforts from the staff point of view. And I think we would ask the applicant to also make best efforts to reach out to their neighbors.
Yeah. Then the other, the next question I had was the, the ordinance has written here is talking about businesses being applicants, but CUPs run with the lands, not with the business that's operating on the land. And so I was just wondering who the applicant is and who has to be in good standing in order to apply. Is it the landowner or is it the business operating there? If you had a piece of land, for example, that was in good standing when the COVID shelter in place order started, but they have a new tenant who comes in next month, who needs special circumstances to be able to operate, who's, who's applying and who needs to be in good standing?
Um, CUPs definitely run with the land, but it is the obligation of the person who, or entity that runs the operation that has to comply with the conditional use permit. So this, the conditional use permit is specific to that physical location. But the obligation is on whoever operates it to comply. So that's the typical way that CUPs are implemented. So that business would have to be in good standing at the time the shelter in place in order to be considered for the process.
Okay, so if, if it were, if it were a landlord who has a new tenant or, you know, as you said, sometimes businesses might need to combine or do other things in order to get by, that business may not have existed at the time that the order took place. So they would not be eligible for this?
Um, the way that we have it defined, if I understand your question, a new tenant would not be eligible. Only existing tenants prior to the pandemic would be eligible.
And is there, is there something you were trying to protect against by having it only be those businesses that existed at the time of the, of the order? I mean, I, to my mind, it would, it would be nice to have this for any business that's operating while the, while the order remains in place. As long as they're in good standing. I get the good standing part. I don't want to have people who, you know, aren't licensed doing things that they're not supposed to do.
I think that that's certainly up to the council's discretion and discussion. Staff's intent was to create a relatively narrow process because we understood the interest was to make sure that our existing businesses remain viable. Because although we don't, you know, often want a lot of new businesses coming to town, we really want our existing businesses to remain viable because they're such an important part of the community. So that's how we understood it. That's how we framed it.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the, the restructuring thing that you mentioned earlier, that there, it may be, you know, what we think of as the same business, but it's not technically the same business. And then the last question I had was just around what you expect the scheduling would be for this. Would we have, you know, a, a scheduled weekly time slot for this? Or would it be more the ad hoc committee meets literally ad hoc? You know, if an application comes in, you'll call around and figure out when people have an open slot on their calendar.
I think it would be literally ad hoc. I don't expect a lot of these types of applications, but if we, you know, I'm suspecting we'll have between one and five. And if we do receive them, we want to be very responsive and move them as quickly as we can. So I think we would check the schedules upon receiving an application and set the meeting and move it quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, we got an email from Betsy Morgan Thaler this afternoon, a little after five about, she was specifically concerned about the Neely project. And I, it wasn't the intention to, for, for this, this ad hoc group to consider something like the Neely wine tasting application. We just could just speak to that for that, that question?
And that's not the intent of the ordinance. And we do think that the way that it's written is to preclude that from happening. And so that application, for those that don't know, is an active application. It is not approved at this time. So it was not an existing business with all of their approvals in place at the time of this, so they wouldn't be eligible for any changes to that. So we do feel like the language is pretty clear. There's also language that the business would need to be directly impacted by the COVID pandemic. I don't think we'd be able to make that finding either.
Thank you. Other council questions for Laura? Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, all right. Rusty, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just curious if we could hear an example of a particular essential business that is in need of a truncated and accelerated conditional use permit granted with minimal public participation in the process.
What are we addressing here? Do you have one in mind? You're here, Laura?
No, I, I don't, we don't specifically have one in mind. We have been talking to businesses that have indicated us, for example, issues around paying their rent or otherwise. So in anticipation of further conversations, we wanted to create this kind of mechanism to support the ability to, to make some kind of short term arrangement to ensure that they, that they, being the business, could continue to operate. But I don't, I don't have one in mind.
Well, if I could go back to the comment that council member Wangert made at the beginning of the hearing about sunsetting these provisions, we're looking at a situation that may well persist for years, not weeks, not months. And I don't quite understand why the town would be creating such a blanket exemption for businesses in town to circumvent the public hearing and public process that we've put in place to make sure that conditional use permits get the airing and the consideration that the town wants. So it seems to me that there could be a much more focused and circumspect mechanism to give relief in particular cases where essential businesses are impacted and have shown that they need expedited treatment. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Or I could entertain a motion to approve? Anne, go ahead.
Jeff, I think to your final point, Rusty, one of the, the reasons that we are proposing this effort is that we, number one, don't think it will be much used. But in conversations with tenants that we have had through town, we're made aware of some situations where it's highly sensitive financial information that relates to the business's ability to operate. And that in the case, in a few cases, that if it gets to, which again, at this point, we don't have any one, one prospect or one tenant or business owner who's come to us and said, this is what we want to do and we want you to help us do it per se. But we know that there are two or three that could in fact develop if their negotiations and discussions with their landlords or with their lenders, because it's a variety of circumstances related to COVID on all sides. As we know, it's complex and there's no, you know, everybody's trying to figure it out from their various interests and their perspectives. And that this is not intended to be any circumvention of our normal processes in a way that's long term. And, and I think again, in, in making any of the changes that we would potentially recommend, and again, I don't have a specific example because we don't have one, that it would only be to help facilitate the survival of that business. And it was, it's only intended to basically serve those who've been here serving us. So I think in my mind, that, that is, we've created a process that has, and Laura, I want to thank you and the team for really coming up with what is, I think, a very creative approach that incorporates all the best parts of what the various bodies do and make sure that it isn't something that's going to be a long term issue and that will have plenty of protections. And it will be, it may never be used. And I think it's probably our hope that it isn't used. But if we need it, that we have it in our, as something that we can implement in this extraordinary time. So with that, I would move approval of the, I'm just looking to see if we have language, but hang on. The urgency ordinance of the town council, the town of Portola Valley, establishing a temporary streamlined planning review process during the local emergency for existing businesses directly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic.
I will second that.
Okay, it has been moved by Anne, seconded by John. Craig, you have a comment?
Yes, it's just, I, I have one comment directly to Rusty's question about, you know, opening up the, whether this is going to have unintended consequences. And, and I think the, the language of the ordinance, especially section F on red page 108, really does limit this only to businesses that are impacted directly by COVID. And it has a few examples, Rusty, in there if, if you, if you want to look at that section where, you know, specifically they have to do things like change their operating hours or, you know, change parking or reconfigure their layout and things like that, that may be prohibited under their existing CUP. So I think it is drawn fairly narrowly and so I'm supportive of the measure.
Okay. If there are no other comments, then also Sharon, if you can call a roll call vote, please.
Council member Wangert?
Aye.
Council member Richards?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to item eight, which is the town hall.
Through the chair?
Yes.
We were also asking the council to appoint one council member as a liaison to the ad hoc review committee.
Sorry, thank you. Does anyone want to volunteer for that? Andrew, I thought you might be the logical choice. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I am.
Okay, do we need to, do we need a motion to nominate her or can we just go with, is this enough, Carl?
And do we need to, an emotion to create the committee as well? I don't know about whether we need to, we need separately.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, you, you should take a motion on the appointment and the ordinance itself, establish the committee and the committee members.
And I would nominate Anne to be the council liaison to the ad hoc committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Craig, seconded by John. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Council member Wangert?
Aye.
Council member Richards?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye. Okay, thank you. And we're on to item eight, which is the town hall and town facilities reactivation plan. Jeremy, are you starting on this one?
I am, thank you, Mayor Alfs, members of the council. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's listening and every resident in town for the patience that they've shown us as we've worked through these issues. I think everyone who knows me knows I'm fond of saying that we are the smallest staffed government entity in San Mateo County. It's a city. We are proud of that. That means that we're all essential workers and intimately involved in everything that happens. It also means if any one of us goes down, we have a real problem in delivering the services that we want to deliver to you. So in the spirit of that, the plan that's before you tonight was developed in order to share with residents how we'll be moving forward into various stages of reopening, if you will. We have been very fortunate that over the last two months, we've been able to provide a significant amount of service to residents without having access to town hall. There still are exceptions to that, but we're still, we're still working on those. But I've been very proud of the staff for coming up with new ways to provide that service. I think in particular, the two of the members of the team who are on the call tonight, Laura and Brandy, for really coming up with some creative solutions to provide that service. The side effect of, of all of this work is that we'll be able to provide a set of services more efficiently to members, to residents and visitors alike because we're moving to more models for electronic submittals and payments and, and similar sort of services. So the, the plan in front of you, I think it recognizes what I hope is what everyone wants to see is that we're, we want to do our best to protect ourselves, residents, visitors and anyone else who comes and sees us at town center. We don't want to create a scenario where we're increasing COVID risk. We don't want to create a scenario where we're overburdening a staff and setting expectations inappropriately with, with residents who rightly so want to see some services that we haven't been able to deliver come back. And as I said earlier, the embracing of technology to really create new ways for engagement with, with residents. The, I think it's The, I think it's important to note that there's no timeframe associated with most of this, except for Phase One, and I'll talk about that a little bit in a moment. A lot of this will be driven by, appropriately by the county health officer and revised orders and how things are going. And we obviously reserve the right to move back into an earlier phase should the situation, a situation arise where we need to do that. We have learned a lot about our ability to work from home. I think a lot of businesses have, have seen this as well. We believe that, lack of a better term, the genie's sort of out of the bottle. I think that it is fair for those who have been able to provide some service from working from home to want to see that continue in some fashion. I know the members of my team want to do that. So I think that this plan also recognizes that working from home will become a regular part of what we do, especially if we're able to keep up the high level of service that we've been able to provide. So with that, I want to just quickly go through what's in the four phases. It's, that's, this is an attachment to Red Page 125 on. So four phases, phase, we're effectively in Phase Zero. Right now, there are members of staff in office on a daily basis. The most we are doing right now is two, but on any day, we usually have one person in. They're there primarily because there's a service that we have not been able to provide electronically. So there's some planning permitting that we're still doing in-house in that way. There's also some fiscal work, particularly the warrant list that requires someone to be in. So Phase One is where we would have staff in the building on some regular basis. And the building is laid out in such a way that we're able to do some social distancing if we're smart about how many people we have in the building. So Phase One is bringing in really two teams. We've been joking, red team, blue team, we'll probably come up with some more creative name. But call it seven people in one week, the next week, seven people, the other seven people in. That helps with contact tracing. It helps with the limiting of interactions within the office. And the other seven people are working from home. So we have in our plan that as of June 15th, we will, we will have ramped up to that. We want to take the end of June to try that out. I'm not expecting that July 1st, that there will still be seven people in this week and seven people that week. We want to provide flexibility for staff to work from home for obvious reasons. It's also within the order still that people who can, can work from home should work from home. And that is obviously sprinkled throughout this document. Phase Two is moving to limited appointments. There are some matters that residents will want to have an appointment with us. We want to reserve the right to come up with alternative means before we have that appointment. But should an appointment be necessary, we utilize primarily the conference room, which is well situated and set up in a way where we can do that. And then Phase Three and Phase Four are really just, you know, modifications of further loosening, if you will. Stage Four is really where things are basically open again. We don't know when that's going to be. But we think that this is a very thoughtful approach to ensuring the safety of, of anyone who we interact with and ourselves. Brandy, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that before we turn to questions and comments. I really want to thank Brandy for taking the lead on this. Laura was heavily involved in the drafting of this document as well. And Howard Young has been taking the lead on the hardware that's associated with making the building safe, particularly for Phase Two. So this is protective screens and hand sanitizing stations and the like. Brandy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add that we, this really complies with multiple levels of guidance and regulations from the CDC to Cal OSHA to San Mateo County Health. So we, we've done a lot of research in making sure that we're being thoughtful in this approach. It also has been vetted with staff. One of the main things that we want to make sure is that when staff comes back, that they feel confident that they're safe, that they have the tools that they need to be safe within the building. And then with the team's approach, one of the main things we're trying to achieve with that is if we do have someone who gets exposed either at work or at home, we have the ability to kind of quarantine that team and then bring the other team in once the building is safe. So it gives us that continuity of service or some continuity of service if we have an exposure. Back to you, Jeremy.
I would also add, and very importantly add, that Mayor Alfs and Councilmember Richards were involved in all aspects of the preparation of this document. We had multiple meetings with them, vetted this through them, and appreciate the support that they lent it to, to the document and also making it a better document. I think your comments were both great, and I think it's a better document because of it. So thank you to you both.
Okay, well, I just want to thank staff for all the work they put in on, on this as well. And obviously, I think, you know, I, I feel like our top priority is, of course, safety. Any questions from the council for Jeremy or the staff? Craig, go ahead. See, hand up.
Yeah, one of the issues that I've had at work in my day job as we're going through trying to figure out our own reopening plans is just to think about liability issues. So should, should somebody, either an employee or a visitor to the premises, get infected and that's traced back to us, which it, you know, could be through contact tracing or might not be traced back to us, but they may sue us anyway. Just to, to double check that our insurance coverage would protect us in such a circumstance from either, you know, an employee who got sick or a visitor. So it's, it's not really so much a question, it's just a, as we go through this, I think the, the work that's gone in is, is very good. But we should just make sure there isn't a pandemic exclusion clause in our liability insurance.
Through the Chair, we're working with our insurers. I don't know that I have a, a final answer at this point about what this all looks like. I think we're all sort of figuring it out. I am not aware of such a clause in the current insurance. You know, candidly, my assumption is that there's going to be some cities that are going to deal with this, and it may not matter what it says in their insurance. It just will have a very different set of conversations. So thank you.
Every lawyer now knows how to spell force majeure. Cara, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I would just add that there has been some state legislation that has said if any employee does contract COVID, that it will be assumed or there will be a presumption that the contraction came from place of employment. And so that's just a, you know, legal presumption that is now in existence. And so presumably, any employee then would be subject to workers' compensation, insurance benefits as a result. That presumption can be contested by the employer, but it'd be very difficult to.
Other questions about this? Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I had one just very quick question on Red Page 127. And it had to do with what you're suggesting on the trails and paths. Because I think that is not, I mean, it's open, it says status, open with face covering and social distancing. It's the face covering that I think is at, at odds with our county orders or directives about wearing masks on trails and hiking. And it's, it's much contested, debated, and it's a hot issue. And it's going to get more, more attention as we get more and more people in Wendy Hill and all of our trails. And so I was just wondering, you know, again, I think that would be a more restrictive order than what we're seeing at the county health level. And, you know, I, I can see some issues arising as a result of that. So I just wanted to hear what your thinking was on that, out of the, you know, out of the team, the ad hoc team, as you were talking about it.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you through the Chair. I, I think we should be a little clear about what this means. The intention wasn't that people needed to wear face coverings. The intention was to follow the requirements of face coverings as the counties put in place. And right now, that, what they're saying is take it with you. So this wasn't intended for people to wear them. It was intended, well, whatever the rules are, is it related to these two?
That makes more sense to me because that's where I, you know, when I read it, I thought, wow, that's more strict than what we're saying to the, for the county, which is to carry it. Okay, thank you for that. That was my only question.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, are we, are we accepting this report? Is that our action? Okay, yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Oh, Jeremy, do you want to talk about the ASCC thing right now or?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. And Laura's on the call as well. So our, there's a few remaining service provision items that we're working through right now. And one of them is reinstating the, the commissions. And our, our intent is to, particularly for the ASCC, we think that there's a way to do this next month. Now, I'm not saying that because I want people to start writing us and say, you said it was going to be next month. But it's not what I'm saying. Our intent is to bring them back at that point. We have some draft planning in place related to how to particularly do site visits in a way that I think would be safe. It's a very different beast to do detailed and thoughtful review of design guidelines and plans on Zoom calls than it is on, for some of the things that we, we get to do. So we, I will say, we are nervous about this and making sure that it is a good experience for everyone involved, our committee, our commission members, public architects and the like. So we, we are hearing more, I think this week, we've heard from more residents who had plans in the hopper and were expecting to see a commission meeting coming up. So we're communicating back out and to the Browns who were on the call earlier. I'm sorry, it looks like they jumped off. Laura and I have been communicating with them, and I think it's been a good communication about where we are. So that's, that's our hope, and we're working towards that as quickly as we can. We certainly reserve the right to let that slip a little bit if we can't meet those, those dates. But it's our hope that next month, we're looking at ASCC meetings. And I, that's latter, that's towards the end of the month.
And I'll just say, having had a lot of conversations with Jeremy and Laura about this topic, it's, it's tricky. And, you know, again, safety is our top priority. And so, you know, I, I just, I appreciate people's patience on this and just, I just want the council to understand it's, we're, we'd love to offer this again as soon as we can, as long as it's going to be safe. The logistics of that, as you can imagine, are get tricky in a hurry. So Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, just one, I did find one other question in my notes before we move to comments. And it has, again, it's on Red Page 130, where you're talking about staff scheduling and where you have under that final sub-bullet of we'll continue telework as necessary and feasible. And the feasible part is what I had the question about. Because, you know, I will need to get a sense from probably Jeremy and Laura and there's, and Brandy and your teams. Do you see very many holes in this in terms of your, your teams being able to work remotely and to be effective remotely and essentially be able to do their jobs in a tele, and again, in a part in-office, part tele-knute kind of environment?
Through the Chair, I see no significant challenges. There may be specific areas of service delivery where we need to work through those. But I am very impressed with how much we're able to do. And I don't mean from a relative standpoint, I mean from an absolute standpoint. I think that we're doing most of what we can, given the restrictions that are placed upon us right now, not because of something we've done to ourselves. So I think it's iterative. I think we'll learn a lot more once we get in and understand what that looks like. But again, I think particularly around the use of technology, technology is just, as much as it's making us crazy and we're tired of Zoom meetings and the like, it's been really useful. And I talk about planning for a second. Planning has really utilized this across the board for multiple interactions with, with applicants. And it's been, it's been pretty successful. So without picking on a specific area that I think is worth talking about, because it really isn't one that's jumping into my head, I, I want to emphasize the ability for people to continue to do this. I mean, particularly if the, the orders say work from home if you can. So, yeah, that's, that's our approach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't want to speak for staff, but I, in our conversations, I think this, this situation has sort of helped push a lot of things forward in terms of what we can achieve from telework in general. So I think it's, I think, in some ways, I think it's been very positive. And I feel free to, to correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy or Laura. But I think it's difficult, but I think we've also learned, made some, learned some new things that we might not have, might have, might have hesitated to explore without this.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's been the mother of invention. We, I'll, I'll, I'll share a couple negatives. We miss each other terribly. We would like to sit down around a table and interact how we normally do and problem solve and, and whiteboard. I know that Brandy and Laura were going to do a virtual whiteboard later this week. We want to do those things. There hasn't been an example of something that we haven't been able to work on as a team and not get a good solution that I can think of. It's, I think it's more just us all, our personalities and getting used to what the new normal may be like. And I think some, some of us, me included, it's hard to transition to a model where you're not able to read everybody's social cues and under, you know, relying more on email, which is always sort of prone to misinterpretation. It's those kinds of things I think everybody's sort of dealing with, I mean, well beyond the valley. But I think that there's incredible positives that have come out of it too. And I think particularly as it relates to a recruitment tool later on, having the ability to say to somebody who, you know, would otherwise be a great fit, but they've got childcare issues or they live farther away or whatever that is, that we can come up with ways where they can be part of our team and not have to be in the building every day. Thanks.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I don't see any, so we could, we can discuss this or we could, I could take a motion to accept the report.
Yeah, just through the Chair. Anne, did you have your hand up?
Sorry, Anne did.
Oh, Laura, I got it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I saw that, and I was thinking, you already asked your question. Any comments or motion? Would move acceptance of the report?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Craig, seconded by John. Any other discussion? Okay, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wangert?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Thank you to the council for approving this, accepting the report. Brandy has been living this for a long while. She should start a consulting business on how much she knows about this. I look at what other cities are doing with vastly more people, power, resources, and what we've been able to do in a short period of time is exceptional. So a very special thank you to Brandy for spending all the time and making this coherent and thoughtful document. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will second that. And I will actually thank, in addition to especially Brandy, but the whole, Jeremy and all of his management-level staff for, for everything they're doing to, to make this happen. So thank you all. Okay, that brings us to item number nine, which is funding for nonprofit or not, not-for-profit agency funding requests. Cindy, are you doing this one? Or Jeremy or whoever?
Through the Chair, turn it over to Cindy Rotis, our Interim Finance Director.
Hello, sorry, I was muted.
Sorry.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Alfs and members of council. This evening, we want, we would like to present to the council the annual review of funding requests for not-for-profit agencies. Just to highlight a couple of things, the most significant difference to this annual review is the removal of grassroots ecology, the ACTERA funding from the list. grassroots ecology, the Actera funding from the list. That reduces the total funding request by 5,000. The decision was made in the last, last year's review to, to pull this one based on, on the, the type of service that grassroots provides. So that, that was the change that we've seen this year. One other thing that I'd like to highlight is the, the, the change that we're seeing also with the COVID-19 and that effect and how that's affecting the, the communication between the organizations. So we've, we've reached out a couple of times to the housing endowment and regional trust organization. And we have not heard back from them, but we have included them in our recommendation and for previous, in many years in the past. So we did consider the heart organization and did want to include them as well in this year's recommendation. And we also did want to highlight the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center that they, they actually do provide lots of, of great mediation services to the county, to the town also. And they specifically called out that they would not be increasing their contribution requests this year. Taking in account all of the, the fiscal impact that municipalities will be having due to COVID-19. So at this time, staff would recommend that council approve awarding a total of 17,584 in the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget. And I would like to end the presentation there and open up for any questions.
Thank you, Cindy. John's got his hand up and then Anne.
Yeah, just, I think this question was asked last year and discussed briefly is Peninsula Conflict Resolution, is that, have we seen any action in town using that service? I know it's been.
No.
Okay. That was all I had. Thanks.
Did, did PC, when we had the, the roundtable discussion on housing, we had mentors at each table. Were they, is that PCRC or is that someone else?
PCRC did provide some of the mentors for, or some of the facilitators.
Facilitators, yeah, right, right. Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I had, I think I was going to ask John's question as well. But I think that I agree, they were definitely part of the, the discussions we had and they were included in that. But my, my main question really went to why we couldn't support the full 3,000 for the Meals on Wheels? Why we cut them back by 500, particularly given COVID and what we've seen in all of the food programs throughout the region right now. So personally, I would recommend that we take that back up to 3,000, which only takes us right over 18,000 for the total. So that, that would be my one question slash suggestion.
Definitely. And I, what, I kind of left it at the $2,500 amount since that was what was suggested last year. And last year was actually the first time that we included Meals on Wheels in the contribution request. But definitely noted specifically because of the situation that we're in facing the current health crisis. I would, I would see that as being a benefit.
I would support that.
Yes.
Other questions from the council? Any public comment? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So I guess we're, we would, we're considering amending the, the request in the report by adding $500 back to Meals on Wheels. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Moved. John did it.
We'll say moved by John, seconded by Anne. How about that? Any further discussion? Okay, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wengert?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, thank you, Cindy.
Craig, go ahead. Did you?
Great work.
Craig, you're muted.
There's a pair of procedural questions in the Q and A that you might want to address, Jeff. They're not about a specific item on the agenda. They're about how the meeting is operating.
Oh, I see.
I attempted to answer, but my answer apparently is correct for me, but not correct for other participants.
Okay, yes. So with these, we run the meeting in these kind of two tiers, attendees and panelists. Partly just because for, for sort of simplicity of viewing, so you see that people are speaking. So I, I actually briefly logged in the beginning as an attendee and could not see the other attendees. I can tell you right now, there are 32 people logged in as attendees right now. And I, I think of the, Sharon, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to say that I pulled the attendee list down and took pictures. So if anyone wants to contact me, I'm happy to give you that list.
Thank you, Sharon.
And through the chair, we'll, I'll talk to Mary Chin, who's our communications manager. I'll talk to her just about if there's a way to set this up where that everyone can see that. I, I apologize. We should have thought that.
Yeah, I don't usually, I rarely do a meeting where I'm an attendee. So thank you for looking into that. And we'll, we'll try to, we'll see what we can offer in the future. Thanks for the question. I, I saw the one, is there another question? Oh, okay.
They were the same, two questions, same, same topic.
Yes, so, yeah, correct. Okay. And Betsy asked the same question. And so, no, it is, there is a difference between what, what we're seeing as panelists and what you're seeing as attendees. So apologies for that. And we will try to, we'll see if we can do something. And no, Mary, we cannot see you. Okay. Item nine, sorry, item 10 is the response to the Portola Valley Neighbors United letter. And I will be recusing myself from this. I, through my day job, I have worked in the past year or so where I, Stanford was my ultimate client. So I will be dropping off of the meeting. And I believe Anne has agreed to, to take over for this discussion since Mary Anne is not on. I will be leaving and Jeremy, just let me know when you guys are coming back for liaison reports. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Alfs. You don't often think you're coming back into this seat after you've left it the prior year, but it's hopefully only for this one item. So let's turn to it now because I know a number of participants are here for it. But what I'll start with obviously is their staff report. And I assume that's going to be you, Jeremy?
Yes, thank you. Just very briefly. It is, it is atypical that there would be an opportunity to respond to this kind of letter in the way that we're doing as normally, this would be part of the entitlement process that's coming up later this year. But upon receipt of two, two letters that were, that we received from PBNU, the interest in the project and also some issues that we thought were, should be responded to, is it related particularly around procedural issues and some misconceptions about how EIRs work, things of that nature, that it made some sense to, to respond. Since the letter, one letter came to Laura and one letter came to the council, we thought we combined the, the two sets of issues there. There are a number of issues we do not address here because it's part of the normal entitlement process. They should be addressed during that process, which is appropriate. That's how we do it for just about everything else in town, every other project, regardless of its size. So with that, I turn it over to the council for any questions or comments. And should the council approve it, we'll, I think there's representatives of PBNU on the call tonight. We'll send this out under the vice mayor's name because the mayor's recused. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll turn next then to questions from the council. Craig or John, do either of you have any questions? Okay, seeing none, then what I will do is look to members of the audience to see if there are questions. And I'm not sure I can see that on my screen. I've got the list of attendees.
I can see it from my end.
Okay, so I'll let you call on them, Jeremy, just because I can't see the, I can see people, but I don't see any raised hands. Or maybe there aren't. There I see one.
There's one and it's Mary Hupdi. Mary, I am unmuting you. You may need to unmute yourself at your end, Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
One more time, Mary. There you go.
There you are.
Well, I, I don't have a lot to say. I, I appreciate the fact that you're writing a letter and that you're responding to, to our, our inquiries. I do think, and I think that my letter to Jeremy and to Laura, which I'm hoping the council has received, does sort of explain what we see as lacking in this particular response, which that we were hoping we would get from you, which was, number one, that you believe and you understand that we would think that the highest priority of town government and its employees is the protection and promotion of the health and safety of the residents. I don't hear that. I hear at the end, there's a little bit of a, of a tip of the hat to it, but never does it say, this was your main concern, we, yes, are committed. And I missed that part because our letter opens with, we want to protect the health and safety of our community. So that being, the next part of that is I, as I just wrote to you, was that, that wildfire is probably our, our highest risk to our health and safety as a community. And of course, there are many, and I don't really see that. I, in the letter, as you responded, there was a good deal about, well, yes, there's this loophole that you can have with high-density housing that doesn't, so you don't have to have 100 foot setback. Well, there's this other loophole. And of course, our, our, we all want to take advantage of those loopholes. Nowhere does it say, we are here to defend your health and safety as a group. And I just keep coming back to the fact that I came from Denise's office, brought the letter saying that we should not be building this to the town council in the good old days when we could actually do such. And nobody did anything until March. So I just thought, it's not just about the letter of the law, it's the intent of the law. It's the intent of our regulations. It's the intent of our, of our general plan. And, and, and then in the next side, it's the necessity to become flexible in the face of climate change. So I don't think we can continue just ignoring these things and saying, oh, well, it'll come out in the EIR or it'll come out in the, whatever the next phase is going to be. You guys don't understand about the EIR. Well, of course we don't. We're not experts. We're just there to say, yes, we are distressed that this project has not been stopped. And that we are distressed that our interests are not being listened to. So we have, you know, 300 people who believe this and, and understand it as well as we do. I will never concede that, that, that in your, your last thing that of course, let's see, I don't want to go on about the letter itself because I, I think it's well-intentioned. And I understand that we do have within rules and regulations that this could continue. We need to see what it's going to do to our community and to our risk. And I think that's, that's my only response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jeremy, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment to, to one of the statements that Mary made. The, the staff, nor the, nor the council at this point, but the staff is in no position to stop a project. We don't have a mechanism to do that. The, the way that I would describe it is if, if someone came to us with a single-family residence that they wanted to build and their neighbors came and said, you must stop this, and the staff simply stopped the project, there would be great concern and rightly so. The, the mechanism to decide whether the project's appropriate for Portola Valley is moving forward. And that will happen through a robust entitlement process, including the, the vegetation management wildfire review that we've taken seriously since late last year when Laura was preparing the, the EIR notice out. And so well, it, it, well into late last year, we were working directly with the consultants on looking at this as an issue. So I, I just, I, I think it's really important to state again, for the record, that the town staff is not going to stop a project. There's a process by which the decision-makers who are accountable to residents will make a decision on whether that project's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
It looks like we have another raised hand, Karen, as that's what I see. Jeremy?
Rusty was the next one.
Oh, Russ, okay, good. You're keeping track. I don't see all of them.
Rusty, hold on just a sec. Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to expand a little bit on Mary's points and, and make two points in addition to them. It's not what's in the letter, it's what's not in the letter you've drafted that is of concern. And what I mean by that is 60 residents of Portola Valley wrote to the town council, not to the staff, not to Stanford, to the town council, to the members of the council sitting here tonight and those not here. And the reason they wrote to the town council had nothing to do with Stanford's project per se. It's not about the entitlement process for approval of this. It's to find out where are your priorities? Is it your highest priority to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Portola Valley? We think it is. Do you? Do you agree that wildfire is among, if not the greatest, risks that confronts our community? We think so. Do you agree? And lastly, in the context of this application, information was brought to the town, warning the town of the fire risk, asking the town to move the project to a different site. That information was not disclosed and it wasn't publicized by the town until 60 residents wrote to town council. And then a month later, it was posted on the town's website. Now, we don't consider that acceptable. That's the point of the letter. The two points I'd like to make are in the context of wildfire. It's very important, and we want the town council's support in this, to differentiate between fire hazard on the one hand and fire risk. Hazard, wildfire hazard is looking at Stanford's site, looking at Stanford's project and seeing what kind of conditions on that site are conducive to the spread of fire. Stanford's own consultant, two weeks ago, acknowledged they're very severe. And based on its modeling, indicated that a fire on that site would spread off-site within one hour. One hour, it would be off that site, in the hills, reaching the property of the neighboring properties. That's under the conditions modeled by Stanford. Well, that raises the second concern, not hazard, not, not is there a fire risk on the site? But fire risk is what does that hazard pose to all the residents around? The ones who ring the property and the hundreds of residents beyond in the ravines and canyons adjacent to it. Now, Stanford's vegetation management plan, which was submitted two weeks ago, doesn't look at fire risk at all. The modeling is limited to its site. And it's only trying to constrain, constrain our focus to its site, not the risk that it poses to the broader community. We don't think that's an acceptable way to look at this project. And we need to understand, where is our town government on this? Are you on the side of the citizens of the town whose safety you are obligated to protect? Or are you on the side of the developers who want to build in this town? Whose side are you on? We need to know. Whose side are you on? We need to know. The last point that I want to make has to do with the disclosure of information about the hazards on this site. We've already seen that the report of the Woodside Fire Protection District was not disclosed or publicized until after 60 residents wrote to the town council. We hear that the town now has a website that's putting up some of the information. I can tell you, it doesn't have all of the information about the project, but I can tell you in particular, it doesn't have the seismic hazards report that was submitted by Stanford on its geological investigation of the site. That seismic hazards report is required under state law, not just town ordinance, and it's not up there. Why not? Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Jeremy, let's go to, I think Karen is next.
Hi there, Karen Wick. I hope you can all hear me. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for everything that you're doing and working during these unprecedented times. And it sounds like I'm not as knowledgeable as both Mary and Rusty, but I'm a little, you know, I've just kind of learned about this process a little late in the game, and I'm just curious where you're at in this process. And I ask because it appears that there are many town ordinances that are being lifted for this project. And that bothers me because as someone who's done construction in this town, you know, I made sure I dotted my i's, crossed my t's, I followed all the rules. And Jeremy, to your point, I'm quite grateful that town staff can't go in and block any projects. So, you know, I know what it's like to be on that side. But it does bother me that there are different setbacks for this project. And I'm also wondering if any studies are being done or have been done that will accommodate the traffic in town, the impact on the school district. I'm not sure who's going to be living in these the developments. So, you know, once again, I apologize if everyone is a lot more knowledgeable about this than I am. So, and, you know, also, if the town has a website about this project that Rusty was just referencing, perhaps you could make that easy for people to find. I actually didn't know about that. So those are some of my comments.
Anne, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
So Karen, thanks for the comments, and please say, everyone comes into these processes at different points, so thank you for the questions. So just going a little bit backwards, when a project is of a certain size, plainly speaking, there's a tool that we use called an environmental impact report, an EIR. And within an EIR, there are multiple different aspects of a project's impacts that are reviewed. One is traffic. So there will be an extensive review of what traffic changes there will be or may not be associated with the project, and potential mitigations to those impacts. So that comes out during the entitlement process. So the applicant has not formally submitted their, or resubmitted their application. So once that occurs, then the next phase of the entitlement process begins, which would start with an initial planning commission meeting, and it would go from there. So it's absolutely part of it. I think the council commissioners and residents, we all want to understand what the impacts are. And that's the tool that we use to understand what those impacts are. An applicant has every right to apply in the way they want to, and it is not uncommon to have applicants apply for projects that go in a different direction, whether it's the spirit or letter of the code, or are using state laws to modify our own code. Single-family residences do this, where there'll be an application and the code is saying something a little bit different. So we can't stop an applicant from saying, "I want my day in front of the body to review this." To your point, it's not what staff does. We will let them know if we see things that we, this is not to code, or this is not to this issue. This is obviously a complicated project with lots of moving parts, especially as it relates to state law. And that's what the entitlement process is for. It is designed to vet all of these issues in a way where the decision-makers can ultimately decide. I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot if you want to make sure I've said that all correctly, but if there's anything you'd like to add, please.
The one thing I'd like to add is that we're quite early in the process. There seems to be a misperception that we're much farther along than we are. And so in planning language, we talk about whether an application is complete or incomplete, and that just means whether it's complete for processing, whether we have all of the information in the file, the plans, the studies, the information, in order to really get deep into the analysis and to complete the draft environmental impact report and to start bringing it in front of the approval bodies for preliminary and final reviews. And at this time, the application is not complete yet. So we don't have all of those needed pieces to begin that kind of meaningful review. So I think a lot of feedback is very well taken in regards to what we have on the website, and we're going to be working on some language that's more descriptive and easy to understand, so people know better where it is in the process, as well as adding some additional information to make it easier to find.
Thank you, Laura. Jeremy, do you know what we have next in order? I know that both Rusty and Mary have asked to speak again, but who do we have before? Is it Kristi or Dave? You're muted.
Sorry. It looks like four more Dave Cardinals, the next one.
Okay.
Hold on, Dave. There you go.
Sure. First of all, I have no doubt that all of you have the best interests of all of us at heart, so I just want to say that. I mean, that's not a question in my mind. Now, that said, I think Stanford has been a relatively lax steward of their land. From talking to people next to the wedge, they have done very little fuel load mitigation. They've set fires, most recently, maybe a year and a half ago, through, or trimming near the 280. So I think we need to hold their feet to the fire. But the proposal they have, you know, I think it looks pretty good, and it's their land. We're uphill from it. So we're going to get burnt to the ground if it screws up. But I think it's, you know, it looks like a nice thing. It'll be more people in our town, which we need. We need more housing. I'd love to see them around the loop. So I'm supportive if we can make sure they are responsible landlords for going ahead with all of it. I don't think it's a, like a weird, like, subterranean plot. I think it's a, people want to develop some land they have in a responsible fashion.
Thank you. Next, I think, is Kristi Corley.
Hold on, Kristi. Okay, Kristi, you may need to unmute at your end. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Kristi, you may need to unmute at your end.
I feel like we are paradise. Alpine is our exit. I live on Alpine Road, and I'm very concerned about it and the density of it. And now we have COVID on top of it, so let's put more density. And we do know from New York that density causes more COVID. So that's not something we desire in our town. So I just also am concerned about, I want to be included in the process, not informed later in the process regarding IER. So you're saying we're going to finish all of our IER, and then we'll report back to you. We're asking, can we be involved in each process of the IER? If you're meeting on the land and you're looking at biology, can we walk with you? If you're doing a Zoom and you're talking about traffic, can we go on that Zoom? I guess I don't want it later. I want to be involved during it. And how can residents be involved during the IER process, or EIR, sorry? That's my main concern.
So the first thing I'd like to say is just to the chair, I think it's important that the comments be germane to the letter and not the project, because there will be a very robust process where all of the questions will be answered. I understand that that may be frustrating for some folks, but we are early in the process, and there's going to be multiple meetings on this exclusively when or and if the applicant decides to move forward.
We're trying to get the word out to get people to read about it as it happens, so people don't come in late and say, "I didn't know anything." So us talking about it now actually gets the community educated. That's all I'm saying.
So there's going to be many opportunities for resident involvement in the coming months, and nothing's going to get decided without public participation. So when a draft EIR is ready, the public will see it and be able to comment on it, for example. So rest assured, the process that is being followed and is being designed and will be implemented will be one that maximizes participation. The reason that we have so much material on the website is because we feel strongly about that. This is not what the town normally does. It is not what any city normally does. You don't normally put up pre-application materials, for example. So there's nothing about that other than that that wasn't a process that we had in place until then. Actually, the letter that I think people are referring to came from us. It was not a letter that was somehow found another way. So I want to assure people that that's what we're doing. So Kristi, you-
You're gathering a lot of information, and the earlier we can read it, the better, so we don't have to read it all at once.
Understood.
Kristi, I think I'm going to, I think we've got it, and thank you for that. I think that, as Jeremy said, it's a very long process, and you will be much involved, probably more than you may want to be in the end, because there's going to be many, many, many steps here. We're at the very beginning of this process, so please do understand that. And there's no attempt or effort to keep any information from anyone. This is the most public of processes. There have been no Zoom meetings with Stanford during this time period during COVID. And it's entirely in the applicant's hands as to how it moves forward and what the next steps become, because they still, as Laura mentioned, haven't completed the application process, so we don't even have a completed application yet. And things don't start moving again until we do. So, and Mary, I'm going to ask you to see if you have something new to add, because I think it's, you know, we're wanting to kind of step through this. If you do, please go, but please be succinct.
Mary, you may need to unmute at your end. I've unmuted you at this end.
I actually will cede my place to Rusty. I did want to just say, in defense of my First Amendment, there is, there, we do want to get the word out. We do want people to know. We do want people to understand. In no way do we think this is some kind of a plot. We just want them to understand and get some honest information. And we have a pretty robust website, I think, that does tell an amazing story. And we, of course, we make it easy for people to get to your town website on this, too. So it's our intention to make sure that the stuff you're bringing up is available to your public.
Thank you. All right. With that, do you see any more raised hands, Jeremy?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Anthony, your hand comes up and down. I'm not sure if you want to speak. If you do want to speak, will you raise your hand again? All right. And you're unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself, Anthony.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment to the town council. I have lived at 1225 Alamos Road for about 43 years now. And I was first made aware of the Stanford Wedge Project in November of this past year at a meeting of people who were invited to attend because they were within 1,000 feet of this proposed Stanford Wedge Project. When the comment was made that this, we're very early in the process, I was led to understand that this actually has been in the works since 2016. And that, at this meeting that I attended, I was astonished to see how advanced the process was in terms of architectural renderings and proposals from Stanford that I was unaware of. When I canvassed members of my neighborhood, I was surprised to find that everybody was as ignorant as I about this project. And that extended not just to people in my immediate neighborhood, but to people elsewhere in West Ridge who had known nothing about it. And I was surprised to hear statements that this had been well-publicized and public notice had been given, and that there had been no objections from any quarter about this project. The things that concern me really are just the lack of transparency. And I don't know, we've talked about this 300 signatories to a letter to the town council, but I don't know how much the wider Portola Valley community knows about this project, and have they had a chance to weigh in on the process? It doesn't seem like that has happened. And I don't know how that information can get out short of notices in the newspapers or some other way for the town to communicate with the neighbors. So I'm interested in whether the town council and the planning commission are unanimous in their support of this project at this point, or are there people who are not in support of this project, and if so, why aren't they in support of it? It would seem on the face of it that, given our zoning requirements and so on, that a project of this sort would have been rejected out of hand before it even got very far into the planning process. So I understand there's an environmental impact report that's going to be forthcoming, but as other people have commented, there's not really much in the way of input from the citizenry until that report comes out, and then people are going to have a chance to weigh in on it. So I appreciate your taking my comments. The other issue that I was aware of was a letter dated April of 2019 from various communities in the county to Supervisor Semidion, addressing the mitigation problems and the adverse impacts related to Stanford's 2018 general use permit. And it was signed by our mayor at that time and by Jeremy Dennis. And it seems like there was a whole list of criteria that were going to be required of Stanford for mitigating the impacts that led to Santa Clara County basically terminating their agreement with Stanford. And since we in San Mateo County were also signatories to that letter, I'm surprised that we are not holding Stanford's feet to the fire to address all those mitigation issues that were raised by Santa Clara County. So thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
With a few comments. So Anthony, thank you. So there's a fundamental difference between where the, excuse me, the general use permit process was for Stanford in Santa Clara County and where this project- and where this project is now. The town got involved in the discussions related to the GUP during the planning commission and council, excuse me, board of supervisor meeting. So it was already, it was at the very end of the entitlement process, which was during the very end of the entitlement process, which is entirely appropriate. This project is not in that phase of the entitlement process. So the, there was an ability for the town and other cities to respond to information that isn't available now, that will become part of particularly the EIR and then any discussions around code. So that I think that's the first thing. They're just two very different places. Secondly, the council, planning commission, they have not reviewed the project formally. So none of the bodies have an opinion on the project and that will occur later. As I was stating earlier to Karen, who was on the call, it would be akin to a member of the council publicly stating before a member of, before a project received an entitlement process that they didn't like the project. We don't do that here. That's not something that would be fair to any applicant. So I think it's a very different process than is being described tonight. There's no mechanism for the town to say, you know, we're not letting you do this. That happens at the entitlement process when the planning commission and council say, you get to do this or you don't get to do this, when we had all the information that we can gather. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I am going to bring it back now to my colleagues for any comments. We're through with the public comment portion of this for the evening. And I think that it's time to really discuss the issue at hand, which is the response to the letter. So John, I see your hand raised. Please go.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just make a comment regarding both the issue of safety and the issue of the process. I think it's really obvious that we are in an area that has potentially great dangers from wildfire. Everyone understands that. I think it also is very clear that the process that we normally go under for any project in town, that project that I've, I've been working on projects here in this town for 35 years or more now. And was one of the original drafters of our, of our design guidelines. And I really do know the process and I know that's pretty complicated. And it can be very drawn out and very frustrating to everybody involved. If you're outside of the project, it's even more mysterious and more difficult to follow. But I think people should understand that, at least from my point of view, the approach that I take to a project like Stanford's is that we trust that the process will bring out all the issues that we, that need to be brought out. And you have to wait for those things to come together because it is, like I said, very complex. And it's worked very well over the years. And I think that people wouldn't be pushing to protect the nature of the town if it hadn't. So I think we've done pretty well over the last 50 some years. And I think if we just settle back and pay attention and follow our normal process, it'll work out. Whatever works out will work out. We don't know at this point how it's going to work out. And it really is up to Stanford now to step up and make their best pitch. And if it turns out that it doesn't meet our requirements, then it won't go through. If it turns out that it does meet our requirements, then more power to them. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, John. Craig, do you have anything you want to comment on?
I'd mirror John's comments. You know, I think Rusty's point is well taken that safety of the residents of the town is one of our main concerns. But the oath that we swear is actually to the Constitution and the laws of the state of California and making sure that due process is followed. And that's, that's critically important. You know, the process that we have set up is designed to ensure that public safety. And we follow the process because it gives an applicant an opportunity to go through, review all these reports, try and mitigate circumstances, come up with alternatives, revise things and get their application to the point where they think it could potentially be approved, that they've, they're satisfying all the code requirements, they're meeting all of the other requirements of the process. But we really can't short circuit that process or we're taking away from the rights of an applicant to come up with a proposal in the first place. And that's, that I think is at the core of what this letter is talking about. It's saying, you know, yes, there's some elements of the project that probably may need some refinement and need some work done in order to, we've already written letters to Stanford to that effect, that they need to fill in more parts of their application in order for us to be able to review it. But until that application is complete, we can't begin the process of thinking about the merits. Because the entire project, they could, they could swap tomorrow and come up with a completely different design that they think better satisfies the requirements that they need to meet. And so, you know, our job and the job of the planning commission is to wait until the project is before us and the application is complete so that we can review all of the parts of it and evaluate whether or not it meets the requirements that we have for projects in town. But not letting an applicant get to that stage where we evaluate a project on its merits is not something that we can do.
Thank you. And I'll just add that I think I agree with both what John and Craig said. And I would hope that everybody who's been on this call this evening understands that one of the top priorities of this council has always been our residents' safety. From COVID to fire prevention, Chris Ronna's presentation on emergency prep, if you heard it, would demonstrate that there has been a longstanding commitment to be the risk earthquake, fire, COVID, any other number of issues that we're facing now, that there's been an unwavering support and prioritization of that for all of us because we're residents as well. So, you know, keep remembering that that's who we are and why we do this and spend all of this time doing it is critical to our passion for the city and for the town and for what we believe in. And it's vaunted and most beloved of ethics and ethos. So please be aware that that is underlying all of our actions. And I think Craig's description of process was the second part of what I was going to say, which is that there is nothing that we have done. And while some people may not have been aware of the project, there have been ample opportunities, many, many different meetings and different showings and where we've had Stanford doing open houses. They've done open houses. We haven't. We just facilitate them as we do any other applicant. And a final note that in hearing some of the commentary about the criteria being applied to this or any one project, please be aware that if that, if those criteria were applied to every parcel in town, to my home, to your home, to everything surrounding us, it's likely we would all fall very short of the kind of commentary that I was hearing about the specific danger of one parcel. Because we're in a high fire area. And as you can tell by all the efforts we're making in every part of town, and whether it's our right of ways and our public properties and the town-owned properties or are encouraging our homeowners on their private properties to do as much as they can. That is something that we're going to be living with and continuing to promote for the safety of all of our residents and for every single parcel that's in town, whether it's this one or others. So we're being consistent. And I think that's one message that I hope you take away from the discussion tonight. So what I'll do now is to bring it back to John or Craig to see whether you would like to make a motion to accept the letter or if there is another outcome that you prefer. Yeah, John?
I will make the motion to accept the letters as drafted.
I would second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor. Roll call, please, Sharon.
Councilmember Wangert?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. And I believe, Jeremy, do you have Mayor Ralph Speck on the line to continue or should we keep moving?
I just texted him to come back, so I assume he'll be back on momentarily.
And do we want to take a two-minute break? I can go get a glass of water while we.
Yeah, I might turn on some additional lights so I don't look like a redhead. You must have been wondering about the wigs. Not good backlighting. Hold on.
Jeff, we're, we're going to take a two-minute break, actually, so people can get water.
All right. No worries.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and we're back in session. We are on to liaison and committee reports. Andy, you want to start us off?
Yes, the only meeting that occurred, I think, in the last two weeks was today's CCG finance committee meeting. And it was an interesting meeting because there are meetings kind of got out of order this year where the finance committee met after the CCG board of directors met. And so that they, there was input from that group. But what's been pretty fascinating, and we actually, for the first time ever, at least that I've been involved, we actually continued the meeting to Monday because there wasn't adequate time to really review some of the COVID impacts coming. I think it's going to be, the challenge for CCG is that, given their sources of revenue, which come, you know, principally from measure M and congestion relief measures as well as the express lanes, JPA, all of those are in play, given COVID, in terms of what the numbers are going to look like. And obviously, the expense side is equally at risk. So I think what we're going to be doing is stepping back a bit and saying, you know, we may need to have a different process during this time period going forward to reexamine the budgets as time moves forward and not follow sort of the typical finance role in that group, which is to review the investment portfolio and to look at the blend, the composition and the types of investments they're invested in and obviously compare the returns of LEAF and the county fund, county pool. So it was a very interesting meeting. It's kind of, I think, symptomatic of the COVID era in that it's evolving is the best way to put it. So other than that discussion, I have no more to report.
Okay, thank you. John, go ahead.
You're on mute, John. John, you're on mute.
Thought I got that. Okay.
There you go.
Last night's conservation committee meeting was all I had. Fair amount of discussion about looking for new ways to get more people involved in maintaining the open spaces in town. That's just an ongoing discussion. They've been discussing it with Jeremy and Tower for quite some time. And I'm looking for new options. The, let's see. Some discussion about putting on a new push for rodenticide campaign to offer alternative alternatives that may be coming up later in the year. And a discussion about the possibility of putting a website, something on our website for, it's a kids, for kids' activities in town. Possibly, it came up related to studying nature at the Frog Pond and biology studies, that kind of thing. And I thought it was probably an interesting idea that we, that they are going to look into. And maybe we can come up with a way to get kids involved in things when they're locked down as we have been and make it a little more pleasant for them.
I was going to say the joys of thistle pulling.
Yes, right. Now, that one's gone over pretty well already. I think that was the main points. Okay, that's mine.
Okay, Craig. I had one town meeting, which was Trails last Tuesday, and I didn't realize what day it was. And so I didn't have my alarm next to me. And I slept through the Trails committee meeting. So I'm not sure if anything came of that, if staff may have heard anything. And then the other meeting that I had is Jeff and I are on a regular weekly meeting with two members of the school board. And on our call today, just before lunch, Roberta, the superintendent, let us know that they've got the latest information from the county school superintendent on how they're looking to manage reopening schools. So as you may know, certain kinds of daycares and camps and things are allowed to operate currently as long as there are no more than 12 kids in the group. And it has to be the same group of 12 kids so that you're not intermixing different groups. And it's got to be the same teacher, adult supervision. And that doesn't really work for schools where you have multiple subjects and different kids taking different classes. And that, so they're trying to figure out how to not create centers of germ distribution while at the same time making education actually work and not having to have all the kids remote all the time and being able to offload childcare from parents and all of the things that have been real problems for the last couple of months. And so the latest is that they're looking at trying to manage groups that are approximately 16 people in size as opposed to 12, or 16 kids as opposed to 12, that you are allowed to do some amount of intermixing between those groups. They need to be cautious of doing it. So if you're within your kind of, I forget what they call it, a cohort or something of 16, that they might have, you know, lesser precautions, like you can maybe take your masks off and talk to the teacher without a mask over your face and things like that. But then when you start mixing with people from outside that group of 16, they have further measures that they would need to take. And that at lunch, they'd be socially distancing. And they're just really thinking through exactly what all of that means. But they seemed much more positive than a week earlier where they thought it was going to be 12 and it was going to be impossible. It sounded a lot like they're, they're getting to a point where they're sort of understanding what they're going to need to do. And it's daunting and there's a lot of work and a lot of working through it that they're going to need to do. But it seems surmountable. So they're, they're looking towards thinking that they actually will be able to reopen the schools. Not this year, but, you know, for next school year in the fall, where a week ago, it wasn't clear that they were going to be able to do that. So things, things there seem to be heading in the right direction. And I think there, there was some more information on our call, on the county call from the county superintendent about that. And I think that they were going to be talking about it at the Portola Valley Board meeting, which is tonight, I think, same time as ours. So there may be some more updates coming from about that. But that, that seemed to be heading in a positive direction. And that is all I had.
Okay. I did not have any town meetings last two weeks. Well, other than our, other than our phone calls, various phone calls we've had with rules and some of the stakeholders, nothing, nothing really to report from those. The one thing I will just say again is that, so Peninsula Clean Energy has a program that we're on the cusp of sort of rolling out and announcing publicly, which will, basically, we're going to be contracting with some kind of solar and battery storage companies. And they will be, they will be marketing solar and battery systems for residences and small businesses. And basically, they're targeting, you know, communities like ours where people are looking for backup systems during a power shutdown. And because they're, they're working with us, we, they will, they're, the batteries that sit on houses will actually become part of PCE's resource adequacy, which means that they're actually of value to us, which means that we would actually compensate people, help subsidize the cost of the battery in exchange for sort of a limited access to use the battery during certain short, short shortage periods on the grid. It's a, it's a resource called resource adequacy. It's more complicated than I could possibly explain right now. And I'm sort of saying this and I'll keep sort of putting it out there because I'm hoping that people will consider this as an alternative to buying a generator for the next round of PSPS coming this summer and fall. So it's a, it's a battery. If you've got solar plus battery, you could, you could actually run your house, hopefully indefinitely off of adequately sized and designed system. Just something to keep in mind.
Jeff, is that for, you have to have both solar and battery or can it be an either or?
No, you could, it could be, I mean, it's the, it's really a battery resource and it can be in tandem with a solar system or it could be a standalone battery. And so you could actually charge a battery, have a battery for backup. And it would be your backup battery and it would sort of, from time to time, would be used as part of PCE's kind of grid, grid reliability resource.
And the timeline for that would be having active systems this year?
I'm hoping that, I mean, I was hoping it would be online already, the program. So I'm hoping that people, they'd be able to sort of go out and install their first systems this summer for the fall, yes. Because it's really, from, from the customer's end, it's just a solar system with a battery backup. And we've got a lot of those already and it'd be nice to have more. That was all I had. So we'll move. So we'll move on to Jeremy's report. Jeremy?
So just two items. So the rest of my items came up during conversations tonight. I'm very excited to announce that our library is one of the first libraries in San Mateo County to allow curbside pickup for materials. So we'll start doing that June 7th. So we're actively working with them just to see what they need in order to make that happen. But it sounds pretty low-impact. So we're delighted that we're, we're there. And then the other, I just wanted to maybe bring a little more, actually, I talked about this. I've talked about everything else. I'm done. That was, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Digest. May 21st, anything to pull, comment?
14th, first.
Oh, sorry. I, yeah, sorry, May 14th, anything to pull? Okay. May 21st, anything? Okay. If not, then we are done. Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night.